This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for Tuesday, November 9th. Great day to be a Baron. Or Bruin. Geez, I said that backwards. That's the old one. That's the 81 graduate. I apologize. It's a great day to be a Bruin. I apologize. First up, we have the opportunity for public participation. And I will note that the meeting is set up a little different tonight. We'll be doing the business meeting now at 5:00, and then there will be a community forum at 7:00 PM, which will be another opportunity to participate. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide any feedback? Are there none? Approval of the agenda as we all have perceived here. Motion to approve the current agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have with us the approval of the minutes from the October 26th Business Meeting. We've had a chance to review those minutes. Does anyone have any corrections, edits, or changes to said minutes? Motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
Moved by Esther?
Christina?
Moved by Christina?
Second.
Seconded by Esther? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, first up tonight, we'll have a great chance to both get some feedback or some initial feedback from Lou Alimo on the budget, which will be followed by the blueprint.
Good evening. Tonight's presentation sets the stage for the budget development process. So I'm going to take you through a visual we show every year that usually Dr. McGowan presents just what our cycle looks like. And this is where we are right now when the box is shaded in red, where my role in more of the financial planning is just listening, listening to our instructional administrators, evaluate last year's results, assess current needs, and then identifying the issues. And next we'll begin developing plans and designing the plans. So I'm very much in a listening phase right now. Certainly contributing from, you know, participating in financial planning, but it's a lot of the work in data analysis right now. So I want to start, where we always start our budget development process, is looking at where we ended last year. The last meeting, the Board of Education, accepted our independent external audit results. And in the management discussion analysis, provides a narrative of how we ended the year, and that sets the stage for going forward. So I just want to quickly provide an analytic and how we're looking at things ending last year and then beginning this year. So the graph on the left-hand side shows where our expenditures were year over year. So if remember, we were ending the 1920 school year, mid-year shutdown in March, and then we had a hybrid instructional model in the 2021 school year. So starting at the bottom, I'll just provide very high-level analytic to explain the expense drivers for this. And again, listening to those, we can predict what we will be planning for going forward. So starting at the bottom, we have the kind of the onboarding of our debt and our debt service from our 2017 capital project. As you see, a significant increase in expenditures there. We'll go through that a little bit. And then we have our other contract services supplies. And just analytic and the format that I provided to the Board of Education on a monthly basis, looking at the big categories. So the big increase there, 18% increase, $1.5 million. The bulk of it was contract transportation. If you remember, we stopped our contract transportation costs because of the shutdown, and we were essentially delivering a full transportation service model, even the hybrid learning program. So that's close to $900,000 of that. The second most significant expenditure in this category was the purchase of instructional technology. So we were trying to ramp up for a one-to-one environment, building in our infrastructure, and that contributed to our costs, about half a million dollars of that. So then moving forward into our BOCs, again, we are back to full placements within our BOCs program. And there, we also see an increase in instructional technology, and that's actually the purchase of the devices. So we see a ramp up there, and now we are a one-to-one, so we'll have to look at that repair replacement reserve and expedite that planning. So you'll see money going into the 2223 budget to make sure that we're weaning our way off the capital instructional technology reserve and building in that repair replacement cycle with our base year budget. Employee benefits and salaries are obviously our biggest expense, and starting at the top then, or jumping to the top, we actually see a decrease in our salary expenditures. So part of that was budget reductions, a significant amount of that was budget reductions. We had a lot of turnover and unfilled vacancies going into the hybrid learning model. Going forward in a full, full in-person model, I expect to see that ramping up, and then we're going to see responses to labor market and through our collective bargaining, increase in minimum wage. So we'll start to see those wages going forward over the foreseeable future. In the benefit side, we do see health insurance continuing to rise. Inflation rates in the health insurance are between 6% and 8%, so we'll be factoring that in. And then with increase in staffing levels, you also see increase in participation in our health insurance, and then pension costs are a relatable cost to that as well. So oversee, you see our budget to actual results on the right-hand side. See where we've been over the last several years. Pretty steady. Surpluses at the end of the year and where we started, I've only been able to close out the month of September, but we're off to similar trends. So I see margins, and this is what we report to the Board of Education on a monthly basis. We will absolutely close up the BOCs programs and intuitions as we get later in the year, and then all the other supply services and contracts as departments encumber funds and shrink that down. So it's a snapshot right now. I feel good about where we started the year from a budget to actual standpoint, but we'll look at the high-risk areas closer in each month that we report in the treasurer's report. What we did with that surplus, where the Board of Education allocated those dollars, comparison from year over year, you could see in June of 2021, we started to deplete our capital reserve. We've drawn that down a little bit. What we're planning for is reinvestment in our capital, and that's one of the things we talked about with the purchase of land, is taking that opportunity to reestablish the capital reserve to give the Board of Education the opportunity for continued capital financial planning. We maintained the 4% in the undesignedated. We've put more money into insurance reserve based on uninsured liabilities that we're obviously monitoring closely. Retirement reserve is a liquid reserve account that we can pull from in the operating budget. Appropriated fund balance, so that's about 11% of our total financial position. So that's the amount of surplus that we reallocated to this year's budget in lieu of taxes. So when I look at that and we look at how much of that can be replenished, should we not have as, should we not generate as much surplus going forward? So we have that $3 million. That would first come from the unassigned, and then we would pull from retirement. So we have a few years of contingency planning based on the amount that we have in unappropriated. So I feel like we're in a good position there, and, you know, we can continue a similar investment, always being mindful of, you know, long-term matching of recurring revenues and reoccurring expenditures. Foundation aid. So a much different position with the adoption of last year's state budget. You can see what our receipts have been in foundation aid compared to the amounts due. Very, very static over the last, since 2008, 2009. And we've seen a ramp up and the commitment from the state over these next couple of years to fully fund foundation aid. So that's putting, that's the promise of new money that would alleviate and begin to fund some of our recurring expenditures. So something we'll look forward to, that promise from the state. One thing that's new this year that's worth talking about, and to be transparent about what we're using, the federal dollars fund, there's three buckets of federal dollars and how we're using those. So the first one is the GEAR funding, and that is our COVID response. So that's my first go-to when something comes up as part of the instructional model. You know, we initially put the budget together for continued infrastructure for audiovisual equipment. So now that we have one-to-one, we want to make sure that our classrooms are fully prepared to embrace that model. As needs come up, we're drawing down from that allocation to technology. For instance, we added the tents at the high school and the middle school. We're using federal dollars for that. For our visual performing arts program and specifically our music program, we purchased air purifiers for the room to continue and improve, to improve the air turnover rates. So we're using federal funds for that. Any PPE need that's come up, to be responsive to our school community from a health and safety standpoint, this is our first go-to funding for that. So whatever is left, we will continue to invest in technology infrastructure. Then we have the CARISA and the ARP, the American Recovery. So both of those are earmarked for supplemental instruction and support and be responsive to programmatic needs. So we're talking about tech integration, professional development, responsiveness to emerging mental health needs, adding staff in support of that, intervention, learning recovery, and addressing learning loss. So all new positions, new infusion of resources to recover from COVID and instructional model, hybrid instructional model, just getting kids and supporting kids, supporting our faculty. That's what these dollars are allocated for, really for instructional use. They're not a fund balance tool. There isn't a funding cliff with those, so we need to be strategic about it, but they are here and available to support the needs of our students and our faculty. So the budget to actual factors, things that we're looking at on a monthly basis, we're looking at salaries in response to student needs. We are seeing and I'm hearing, you know, the emerging student needs. So we are adding special education staff. We're adding teaching assistants. We're adding additional mental health supports. So we are adding, again, we're using those federal dollars. We're optimizing those, but those are trickling over into the general fund. So I'll continue to update the Board of Education on where we are budget to actual within salaries. Substitute costs, something we'll monitor. We're struggling with that with capacity right now with absenteeism and quarantines. So we have to continue to watch that and recruitment strategies to build capacity. Benefits, we've started off in a good spot. We've budgeted appropriately for what turned out to be the rate increase, the premium increases. So the only thing I'll be looking at is salaries and then benefit costs related to the salaries. BOCs, we're struggling with capacity of our BOCs to accommodate out-of-district placements. So that's something that we're watching closely, finding alternative placement to meet student needs. That's going to have a financial, a financial impact. And along with that is specialized transportation. We're really struggling with, which our first student is struggling with drivers. So that increase in transportation demand may require us to add more buses or to find alternative that's putting pressure on our budget to actual results. Our enrollment, just a kind of a snapshot, this is our starting point for staffing allocations and for, I guess, mostly for staffing allocation. So where we started the year, we were, we overestimated enrollment at the primary level, 101 students at Council Rock. Part of that, we were being conservative as part of our capital planning. We wanted to make sure we built enough classrooms. So we were very, very conservative in our enrollment projections. But you'll see, being short here has an impact on the long-term enrollment projections. I do, the model is not showing it, but I do expect that we're going to get more enrollments back from the private schools over these next couple of years when we truly emerge from COVID. And you see the other, the other three buildings, we're pretty accurate in our enrollment projection. So this is something that we're going to be monitoring very closely is our enrollment projections at the primary level and update our model every single year. It's a five-year model that we, that we develop each year. So considerations, and as we think about developing rollover budget or, you know, a maintenance budget, we're looking at salaries and wages. This is a collective bargaining year, so we're going to have to assess the impact of that. The impact on inflation of goods and services, that's really where our departments are struggling. You think about our buildings and grounds. You think about our health services supplies. We are experiencing exponential increases in our costs and commodities that we normal purchase. People are pulling out of our competitive bids at the BOCs level, food, things like that. So we're really watching that. I don't have, it's very difficult for me to say to our buildings and grounds, for instance, that you get the consistent allocation last year. They just don't have the luxury of not responding to building needs and to stakeholder needs. So that's something that we'll monitoring very closely. Retirement, again, once we build our salary projections, we have an idea of what the rates will be. BOC services, they're struggling right now in meeting and hiring staff. So they're going to have the same staffing and salary challenges, and that gets passed on to us as far as rate increases. So the next coming months, we'll have a better sense of that. Generally, they're in the 3.5% to 4% range, but we may be experiencing higher rate increases from BOCs. Special education services, all of us are competing for hourly staff, hourly support staff, and so the pressure on the minimum wage and the hourly wage is going to continue to drive up tuitions and services. So a lot more to be analyzed over these next coming months. But when we get down to debt service, we are stable. I'll show you a slide in that and the next. So we've built up. We've funded the capital project, and we're in good shape there. So this is the capital project planning, just a brief history of where we've, where we've built up. So we actually were receiving more building aid than capital, than our capital expenditures. That's because we were paying cash for projects for a number of years. We were doing $1.5 million. All of that was generating aid without any debt. And throughout the capital planning process, Dr. McGowan used the analogy of building in a car payment. We've built that in now. So over these next couple of years, we say the impact on the levy, the gray bars, we have stability there. We've achieved building in that car payment. But we have to look ahead because some of our old debt comes off. So if we want to maintain that investment in our facility, so it truly has no impact on future taxes, we have the opportunity to do another capital project in these next two years. So we're working with our financial planners to determine the amount of it and the amount, the eatability of a certain scope, because that would be my recommendation to the Board of Education. If we've got this levy in there now, let's make it budget neutral from here on out and keep reinvesting that in our facilities. Otherwise, we're going to be using building aid for instructional programs, and then whenever the facility needs do hit, again, we're going to have to rebuild that car payment into the operating budget. So a lot more discussion on capital planning, and there'll be a presentation upcoming, you know, in the next, within the next year, from our financial consultants to show you exactly what that looks like and what we should be shooting for. Tax cap, just a brief history over these last two years, so '21 and '22 fiscal years. You can see what our tax cap number was, 3.83%, and that's as we were building up the levy for the capital project. That began to stabilize right now with the Board of Education allocated additional fund balance. So we did not, we did not go up to our cap limit of 2.85%. And so the next year, I'm anticipating this point based on the factors and the debt that we know about, the inflationary trends, assuming it's going to be 2% for the foreseeable future, our tax cap number would be just over, just over 2%, 2.07%. And again, going forward, as our debt and capital exclusion goes through, you could see then it lowers our money. So unless we reinvest in capital here, that keeps our, then our tax cap number will lower, and then we're using building aid for instructional program. If we reinvest in capital here, we'll maintain more of a 2% tax cap over these next several years. So capital, capital project planning has significant impact on future tax cap calculations, just always something we need to be, need to be aware of. And so this is where we're heading next. Continuing to assess needs, continue to identify issues, but now we're beginning to design plans, putting numbers to those, and begin to develop budget assumptions, more concrete budget assumptions going into the executive budget proposal, which is targeted for mid-March. Sorry for the long presentation, technical presentation, but it's, and sets the stage for every, for the work that's coming over these next several months.
Lou, quick question for you. Do you have a sense that our partners at First Student are starting to look at what they can do to retain and recruit, retain existing drivers and recruit? And I'm talking for this year, but like for future years, do we have a sense of what contingency planning they're doing? Obviously, that has an impact on our costs if they increase the rates for their bus drivers.
Yeah, over the last couple of years, they've invested in a full-time recruiter and marketing person. So we've been fortunate, at least on our contract, where a student has done all right in providing service to us. We could see, you know, other districts, neighboring districts are struggling with that. They're a collective bargaining unit too. So they'll be negotiating, and that's actually one of my biggest concerns, is that as they collectively bargain and driver wages are more competitive, they may not be able to honor the CPI adjustment. So they could say to Brighton, we need to rebid our contract, and then, you know, we're in an open market, and then, you know, anyone could come in and throw a bid. Are they going to be qualified? And are they going to be able to recruit, recruit drivers? They're doing everything they can from a recruitment standpoint. That's their business, right? So beyond just a full-time recruiter and full-time marketer and HR commitment, I don't have a better answer.
No, I think that's the answer. Your sense is they're doing everything they can. You can't go two days in the paper without hearing challenges both in the suburbs and in the city with bus drivers. So that has the opportunity to impact us even this year if we lost a few drivers, just in terms of the short term. So I appreciate that you're on top of that. Thank you.
I do, if I could just make a quick comment while you're talking about drivers. The city continues, Rochester City School District continues to hear proposals regarding transportation for public, I'm sorry, for private charter school and urban suburban students. And this is a conversation happening in many places, but I do want to point out that this is a significant concern for us in terms of the transportation for urban suburban students coming to our district, not for 2021, but for '22, '23 moving forward. And I would encourage people in the community who are RCSD residents, although students, and I say in the community, in our school community, to continue to voice their feelings on the matter with regard to the board and their decision-making relative to that. Transportation for urban suburban students is essential in the program throughout the Rochester area, and we obviously support anything that can be done to make sure that continues to be provided. The other comment I would just make is thanks to Lou for the presentation. A lot of detail really early in the process, although as we've talked about for many years, this happens throughout the year for us. And it's really Lou's financial stewardship over the previous years that have gotten us to the point to say to you, we've weathered a really significant storm, but the moment right now is working through all of the lack of predictability that is around us, knowing there's more revenue, knowing there's COVID relief funds, et cetera, that Lou went into great detail, but providing long-term stability and really thinking carefully about how to position ourselves for the long term. And that capital project slide can't be undersold. The thinking about our debt service and how to make sure, once we've really lifted, and all of you as a group have spent a tremendous amount of energy on that concept of putting that car payment in, making sure that that funding source is available then over time with no new cost to the community. That's the key. No new cost to the community, but to revitalize our facilities and continue to do that work to really have 21st century facility. So I think that that's a really important point that Lou's made, but thinking longer term now is both an opportunity for us and something we haven't experienced before. So, thanks, Lou.
Yeah, I'll just, one final comment, just in Karen knows this. Karen and I said on the audit committee, we continue to get extraordinarily favorable ratings for any of our bonds and our debt service because of how well both Dahlia Watts and Lou manage the finances, basically our taxpayer money for this district. So I echo that. Up next is the blueprint, and I believe we're going to hear from Allison first. I will say to anybody currently watching or who watches this live or on delay, if there is ever a time when you need to be listening, it's right now. This forms all of our priorities for the entire year. This is updated each summer to make sure we're doing the things we believe we need to do. This is a pretty broad document. We're going to hear from a few different people tonight, but sometimes people say, why are we doing what we're doing, or what are our priorities? This is the answer. It's the blueprint. It's available online. Mark was always good at reminding everybody that all these documents are available online. But it's impossible to overemphasize the importance of what this blueprint represents. It's everything we're doing and why we're doing it and why it's a priority. Allison, with that, I'll ask you to take over.
Good introduction. Thank you. So tonight, you'll hear from me and Lou and Deanna and Betsy Paddock about some of the work we've been doing this year around our blueprint. And just to give a quick overview here, we have three buckets that we have focused on this school year, continuation of last year's work, but also kind of looking at things through the lens of where we are right now. Academic rigor for all, which I'll speak to tonight, systems and DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, and mental health and wellness. And as we get into each section, you'll hear a little bit more about the priorities for that group, the action steps that are being taken, and what is in store for the rest of the school year. So the academic rigor for all objective really is very similar to last year, but looking more at, looking at individual needs of students. So as we return from a year of uncertainty and mixed learning models and lots of different things going on, thinking about looking at students as individuals and addressing their needs as individually as possible, continuing to be culturally responsive, celebrating and accepting differences, and working on a growth mindset. So these are things you're going to hear as I give an update tonight, but, you know, our real focus is looking at the strengths and needs of individual learners. And before we jump into updates, you're going to hear me use a lot of language around culturally responsive and sustaining education, and we also call that CRSE. And I thought it was important to share that definition per New York State Education Department, but really, this is the definition that we look at as well. Culturally responsive and sustaining education is grounded in a cultural view of learning in which human development, in which multiple expressions of diversity, and there's lots of examples here, race, social class, gender, language, sexual orientation, nationality, religion, ability, and others are recognized and regarded as assets for teaching and learning. So really, that's the part I wanted to touch upon because you're going to hear that come up throughout the entire presentation, but these are assets that we're looking at as educators and that the individual pieces that our students bring to the classroom should be celebrated and part of our classroom community. So that's what CRSE stands for. So one of the action steps for the school year is to continue to build opportunities for faculty to learn about culturally responsive and sustaining education. And we started that work in a couple of different ways this school year, and will continue on as we move forward. But we started with a partnership with RE Center, Race and Equity in Education, and we're working with five different consultants, one in each school building, and one consultant who's kind of helping us with that broader view to provide some professional development for teachers. And on Superintendent's Conference Day, we continued that work, which built on the foundation of the work that was started last year, really around focusing on our students as individuals and addressing all the pieces that they bring to school with them and how to incorporate that into our teaching and learning. We've also started some school-based equity teams, and that is a shift from previous years where we had a district diversity team, but now we've broken that down into school specific teams where a consultant from RE Center is working with each building principal and with each building committee, which is comprised of anyone who's interested at the school building level, Board of Ed members, and parents and families who wanted to be part of that committee as well, to really hone in on some specific goals for each school building. So more to come about that as the year goes on. And we're starting some faculty meeting work beginning just in a couple of weeks around student agency, and really, again, going back to students as assets and what they can bring to the classroom, and that work will continue throughout the school year. And on curriculum council, we've taken habits of mind as our focus for the school year and looking at how to incorporate that beyond all the great work that's been done at Council Rock and into our third through 12th grade. So more to come on that, but that's where we are to start right now. We're also looking at continuing our work to adapt and revise curriculum to support teaching and learning within that culturally responsive framework. And a lot of that work happened over the summer, and some pieces will happen throughout the school year, and more work will happen next summer. But this past summer, we had nearly 50 units written or revised that took on a lens of not only continuing the academic rigor that we've come to know and expect in all the work we do, but really looking at being inclusive, building cultural competence in the classroom, and a focus on Zaretta Hammond's Ready for Rigor framework, which really is about building a community of learners within the classroom, embracing all the students that you have, creating a learning environment, and creating that awareness of all the kids that we have in front of us. Additionally, with the return to five-day in-person instruction, we've, as Lou mentioned, used some of our funding to think about supports in different ways, and we've added a literacy and math specialist at the 612 level to work more individually with students, either in small groups or even one-on-one in many cases, to support some of the targeted needs that we've identified following the return from COVID. And a great resource has been our K5 and 612 math intervention leaders who are working with teachers to support what that intervention looks like in classrooms. So with the math focus in mind, because that was an area identified as a need for us as we move forward, but really helping our teachers to think about their instruction differently to include all individual learners. And more to come on this, hopefully later this month or in the next week or so, but we are working on an on-demand tutoring support for students in grades three through 12 in the evening, where anytime after school, they could check in through ClassLink online by clicking an app and asking a question, looking for a tutor for any content area from elementary right up through specialized classes in high school and getting some support in that way. So just lots of different ways to think about how to support individual students as learners. So what's next as we continue this school year and even into the summer? We're going to continue our assessment of the curricular instructional strengths and needs of each school building. So what do we need to look at? What are our areas of focus for moving forward, and what are we doing really well? We'll continue to look at text, content, the resources that we use in classrooms, and really develop an alignment of the experiences that children have from kindergarten through 12th grade, and continue our work with teachers and faculty around, you know, resources that they can use. And we look forward to building more opportunities to learn for parents and families through our building, PTSA meetings with the principals and other venues as well. So that is academic rigor for all. In a nutshell, any questions?
There's a lot there.
Lot there.
So for the systems and DEI work, three categories that we're working on. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, what you hear about is a summary and continuation of our hiring practices work, looking at recruitment, retention, and environment practices. Health, well-being, faculty, staff, what we've focused on this year is reevaluating the start time. So we're working as a committee to look at that with the objective of how we might be able to start our secondary students later in the morning. And then the innovation in the development of alternative learning environments is an internal review of our maker spaces, playgrounds, generally of our facilities to make sure that every child has equal access and is able to fully participate. So hiring practices, what we're focusing on this year, we're going to learn from RE Center. And we're going to build on the building, building level teams and look at systems, all of our systems and processes, procedures to diversify our faculty and building cultural competence. So again, all three of our pillars, we're hoping to learn from RE Center, take a step back from the work that we've been engaged in over the last couple of years and see how the Hiring Practices Committee can evolve into more of an, almost an oversight committee, advisory committee, where we're pushing, pushing ideas, questions, data to the building level, and then also hearing their feedback and looking at things from a district-wide standpoint. So we will be meeting on 11/23 with RE Center, sharing with them the work that we have been engaged in, the playbook that we developed a couple of years ago, get their feedback, and really develop this year's work plan. This is just a visual of the work. So we are in the process and continuous process of executing strategies identified in the playbook, especially on the recruitment end, building on our community referral program for every opportunity that we receive, continuously refining our hiring practices. So once we receive candidate, interested candidates, how are we designing and engineering those processes to make sure everyone has a fair shot, everyone is welcome, and has equal opportunity to participate? And then I want to invite Dr. Rio to discuss her work, and she's really taken the lead on the development of the teacher pipeline program. So invite her back up.
Thanks. We were trying to find the right spot to put this into the presentation today, but wanted to give you an update on the work that's been done in collaboration with St. John Fisher College. And it started probably early on in the summer last year where we brought together a group of St. John Fisher College instructors, as well as some of our Brighton instructors, to work together to design an experience, a program that would support students, teaching candidates, students of color who are at St. John Fisher College, enrolled in their school of, excuse me, education, in being supported and doing all their fieldwork and student teaching in our Brighton schools, and then with the hope of coming back here to Brighton to work with us. So kind of building an experience that starts early on in their teaching education career and then, you know, builds that relationship. So we had a group of teachers who worked, as I mentioned, in conjunction with St. John Fisher College professors to design some summer professional development. And so far through that work, we first met with some teachers at French Road Elementary School. That was the first cohort that we have going through because that is the age level that the teaching candidates at St. John Fisher needed to work with. And they went through the professional development, thinking about bias, thinking about how to create a welcoming environment with their colleagues, lots of things that support the work we're doing around diversity and equity, but really through the lens of bringing somebody new to the team. And there have been several opportunities to go to professional development together around those topics, the students at St. John Fisher, as well as our Brighton teachers together. And that's been a great experience. So they've been doing their fieldwork this semester and will start student teaching in the spring. And along the same lines, we started a future teacher club at the high school. And that club has two teachers at the high school who are co-advising the club alongside two professors at St. John Fisher College who are helping students to think about where, how they might want to pursue a career in education. The club is welcoming of all students, but particularly looking for students of color who might be interested in the education field so that they could go to St. John Fisher College and then kind of come back to work with us. So it's really a bigger picture and we're at the very beginning of this program. But I'm really excited for the opportunity and how it might grow over time in connection with St. John Fisher, other colleges, and really just supporting kind of a different approach to including, you know, looking at the bigger picture when we're hiring, starting right at our high school and into college.
Also on this slide, just highlighting the ongoing professional learning. And credit to Maria Marizio, our director at Brighton Teacher Center. We've partnered her, really her center as the director and human resources have partnered for ongoing professional development to build cultural competence. She designed a professional learning opportunity for our security guards on the superintendent's conference day. Just did a phenomenal job, the discussion that she was able to generate and the learning that happened. It was really impressive to be a part of. So certainly kudos, kudos to her. The school start time, so we had a meeting on 11/4 and we began to, we began looking at the 2016 and 2017 work, the survey results, trying to understand what school stakeholders were telling us back then. We have great representation from each school community, parents, teachers, building administrators. And so we're in the process right now of looking at the survey results, looking at the options that were presented back in 16 and 17, refining survey to resurvey the results. We've, I think we're have some, we're expecting some different results post-COVID as it relates to it, and then trying to figure out the best way to do it operationally. And I'm facilitating that from an operation standpoint. It's not a question of whether we should be starting, how best could we accomplish that considering all the operational impacts from a facility standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, the school structure. So great work that's happening in that committee, and I look forward to our next meeting is on November 18. So the action steps for innovative learning, really the reporting work, I want to give credit to Maureen Jeffries at French Road. She's been leading a team with Barb Flender, our occupational therapist, to look at our playground space. So that's an ongoing review right now. They're developing a master plan that we expect to present to the Board of Education with our capital drawdown in the spring. Just thinking about things much differently than we have in design of our playgrounds in the past, how to make it accessible, that again, all kids can have equal access from the equipment that's being selected to the pathways. This is just one example of Barb Flender coming to us and saying, we need to do a better job of children being able to navigate or traverse the playground. The woodchips, while they're ADA compliant, they're not the best that we could have done. So we purchased these, the rubber mats to allow children, a child in a wheelchair, to be able to navigate the full playground area. And then Dr. Mike Leener, Maria Marizio, designing the maker space at the high school, the IHUB Center, which we're currently developing. That's just one example of the review that will be ongoing to the buildings. So what's next, again, where we want to learn from RE Center. We want to make sure we're looking at the charter and the action plan for our Hiring Practices Committee. Start time, we're going to be updating scenarios, looking at the three scenarios that we previously surveyed the community, excuse me, and putting together some dollar impacts for those. And what I just talked about with the learning environments, established building level, those are designed right now as internal facility planning committees. But again, looking at every maker space opportunity, every place-based opportunity to see what we could be doing better. So with that, I would like to invite Deanna. Thank you.
Thank you. So as Allison referenced before, I'm really proud to take a look at the mental health and wellness objectives. As she said earlier, this really is supporting the whole child. But as we look at how do we support the individual needs and strengths of each and every child, and these objectives really help us in order to be able to do that. The initiatives that, or the objectives that we designed for the school year, working alongside with Betsy Paddock, who is going to talk more in depth and in detail some of the nuts and bolts and the nitty gritties of the work being done across the district, really was a resurgence of some of the initiatives that started pre-COVID. But then also we adjusted and really took into consideration what are student needs, what are staff needs, what are the wellness needs that we need to think about post-COVID? Or I shouldn't say post-COVID, as where we are today because of. And a part of that also was taking a look at separating areas into continuing to look at social, emotional learning, restorative practices, and then restorative discipline as well. And Betsy will be talking about that a little bit further. We have increased some staffing in order to support these efforts across the district. And so you will see very recently, as of last week, some postings that include really developing our district mental health team. And those team members include psychologists, social workers, and counselors. So you can see there, we're looking for a K-8 district psychologist, a social worker and counselor at the K-5 level, and also a 3-5 social worker and/or counselor at either one of those categories at grades of three through five to support these initiatives. So we're really excited about these opportunities, which will also help develop the opportunities for more staff members to be right in classrooms, supporting teachers, supporting students, but then also helping to consult with teams or looking at what do families need, maybe even considering other hours of the day to support what our staff and our families' needs are as well. So I'm going to introduce Betsy Paddock, who's going to continue to look at the in-depth and the detail of this. Not only is she an amazing assistant principal at the middle school, but she also oversees K-12 mental health wellness. She's been boots on the ground, visiting with our mental health teams in each of the buildings, listening, thinking about what they need. We're diversifying the needs in each of the buildings and thinking about those considerations for us. She's been working with the wellness committee, the district mental health team, and also the mental health steering committee. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Betsy.
Well, it is certainly great to be here with everyone. I realized it's been, it was January, I think of 2020, when I last presented face-to-face at a board meeting. So it's really great to be here. Near and dear to my heart is mental health and wellness. And right now, we know that we need to continue to build community, create connections, and we have to do that with great intent. And so the three areas I'm going to touch on today are restorative practices, restorative discipline, and social, emotional learning. And so we knew with restorative practices that we needed to reengage all of our staff around restorative practices and community building and create professional development and training opportunities for our faculty and staff. So we started out with training for all of our new teachers during induction. So Katie Falter, one of the sixth-grade teachers graciously said, hey, I'll help you out. And so for two hours, we met with the new teachers and we gave them an overview of restorative practices. I was amazed at how many of them already knew about restorative practices, had done it in other districts. But we wanted to make sure that they had the language that they needed and were familiar with what they would be hearing during the year, and they did absolutely great. We have reestablished our building level restorative practices teams. So every building has one, they meet monthly, and we talk about ways in which we can use restorative practices in our buildings. We are utilizing circles for creating and building connections all over the place, K-12. I can certainly speak to the middle school and what I have seen there daily. I know that at the elementary schools, they're using this as part of their morning meetings. It is with great intent, and that's something that we know is so important and will continue to do that. We have a great partnership with Partners in Restorative Initiatives, or PRI. And we had PRI present at the second half of our superintendent's conference day. And it was to give people more practice, but it was also to make the connection between culturally responsive sustaining education and restorative practices. And that was certainly a valuable training for all. We are doing community circles in our faculty meetings, in our opening meeting, and I can speak to the middle school about this. We use circles, we broke into those circles, we talked, gave people prompts. We want to make sure that our faculty and staff is comfortable with doing circles so that they have that tool, they can use it with their students. And we shared information with our K-12 faculty and staff, just on the guidelines, on some conversation starters and some sample circle plans. But I also want to say that this is not the only way in which our teachers are making connections with kids. They're doing it in lots of different ways. We know that circles are one way to do it, but we are seeing it in lots of different ways across the district. Oops, sorry, went the wrong way. So in terms of restorative discipline, this is something that we have been doing, but we finally had a group that were formally trained by PRI over the summer. It was a combination of mental health staff members and also administrators. And so we had, it was a really great training. It gave us a chance to get all together. I don't know if PRI always loves it when we get together because we have such great conversation. We go off topic, we do little zigs and zags. But it was great to be back together face-to-face and learning more about this topic because it's something that we would like to do throughout the district. We know how valuable it is when there is harm done to be able to repair that harm. One of the things we talked about a lot is utilizing restorative conversations with students. And in school tool now, there's a line where under the discipline tab, you can actually put down if a restorative conversation was used. I can tell you, I have done 10 already this year, and they have been just great conversations. And what's happened within those conversations is that students are able to connect in a way that they wouldn't have if you didn't get them back together because little stories come out. And it really is an incredible tool. We also created a restorative conversations cheat sheet that as we move forward, we will be sending out. And it's prescribed so that if people are asking, you know, what are you talking about in these restorative conversations? We have a specific set of questions that we're asking both parties. And it's really nice, it's scripted, and it's not like throwing a curveball at anyone. It feels very comfortable, I think, for those who are involved. And that's something that we will be sharing as we go forward. And then social, emotional learning. So we want to make sure that our students and our adults are feeling connected, that they're learning different ways to navigate the world socially so that they can just be better versions of themselves, so they can have greater interactions with one another, more positive interactions with one another, and so they feel better about being at school. So one of the things that we're looking at are SEL screening tools. We're doing this through the Mental Health Steering Committee. We're meeting with a representative from Panorama. Panorama's done work with schools around New York State. And they have a screener that seemed to be quite effective. We looked at it at our K-12 mental health meeting, just a snippet. We'll be talking about that more. At Council Rock and then with third grade, they do still use the teacher-child rating scale. That is something that if it is working, we don't want to throw that out, but we know that we do need more for grades four through 12. We had an administrative professional development on SEL, so it was just an overview for our administrators. And Allison graciously asked if I would do it, and I said, of course, I'd be happy to. And so it was a really nice time to get together and to really go over the nuts and bolts of SEL and to be on the same page with our language. And then we're also, I'm really excited about this because it's so timely. We are going to be doing lessons through Bavona Child Advocacy Center in grades three through eight. And so we are scheduling those lessons right now. There is an SEL component to these lessons. They will all happen between February 1st and the end of the year. And all of the kids will have this training through Bavona, and we are really looking forward to that. So what's next? Well, there's a lot still happening. We have our continued partnership and consultation with PRI. So we continue to meet with representatives from PRI regularly. They'll be, we'll be talking about the feedback from the thought exchange so that we can plan steps going forward. I know that in some of the schools, they're looking for more information about academic circles and how to implement those. And that's something that we'll certainly be looking at. We want to have ongoing professional development through the teacher center. This could be on restorative practices, restorative discipline, and also SEL. We want to continue to examine our community and restorative circle implementation. So, you know, what is our plan going forward, not just for this year, but for other years, subsequent years? We are trying to update our student services website to reflect SEL and RP initiatives so that the community knows more about what we're doing and so that we also have those resources out there for families. It's always nice to have members of the community be able to speak the same language and therefore reinforce things with their children. And then the district wellness committee is going to revisit something they used years ago called Parent University. So what we're going to do in our next meeting is we'll be talking about different topics that we feel parents could benefit from in terms of supporting their children. And we will have members of our faculty, staff, administrative team present on, we would do this on a Saturday, be like a three-hour thing. You can sign up for whatever you choose to go to. to go to. And we're hopeful that that will be useful to our community. Any questions?
No, I'll just quickly say to all of you, thank you very much. This is a ton of work. It's something we're looking at all the time, and we greatly appreciate the effort, not just that you four are putting into this, excuse me, but the number of different teams and teachers that you're working with. So thank you very much. All right, on to reports. Financial reports, I think, are in, so there's nothing more to add there. So I'll go ahead to be student representative, Lila.
Hello, everyone. So there hasn't been a lot of new stuff with the students happening since our last meeting two weeks ago. Right now, a lot of the students are in that final push to get all their work in before the quarter ends on Tuesday. As well, I know all the seniors are in full swing with applying to colleges or figuring out what they're going to do next year. Most early decision admissions decisions come out in the next month, so everyone who's all submitted is waiting anxiously for that. This past weekend, Model United Nations had a successful conference. The conference was at Hilton, I believe, and it was the first live conference in 20 months, so that's pretty awesome. I wasn't able to make this conference because I had sectionals, but I know everyone who went had a lot of fun. There were a lot of students representing Brighton as chairs of their committees, and we had seven students win either the best or the outstanding delegate award, which is a pretty large number. This past weekend was the last sectionals of the Brighton Fall Teams. Overall, the Bruins had quite a successful fall season. We only had one sectional title, girls tennis. Tennis did go on to states in New York City where they made it to the semifinals, which is awesome. But the Bruins had six sectional runners, runner-ups. So football, field hockey, girls cross country, girls swimming, girls soccer, and our gymnastics team, which is especially impressive because this was their first year competing together. So I didn't know we had a gymnastics team until, like, they won sectionals, which was really cool. I was like, wow, okay. So then, two teams are still practicing together, swimming and cross country. Many swimmers made it to states, which is in Ithaca, and two runners made it to cross-country stage, which is in Binghamton. Additionally, girls cross country is looking to go to the Federation Meet in Bowdoin Park in Poughkeepsie. This meet is a meet for like the top teams in the state regardless of class, so it allows the best teams, even if they're in a competitive section, to compete. So with the wrapping up of fall sports, we have the winter sports tryout starting next week, so that's going to be really fun for everyone, just to get back to it like semi-normal winter sports season. So yeah, that's it. Thank you all for having me here to speak tonight.
Yeah, congratulations for your performance on the cross-country team.
Thank you.
All right, before we go to the Board of Education, I made a mistake. I want to circle back to just letter A under reports, which is the financial reports. It includes both the executive summary, the treasurer's report as of September 30th, and the approval of the corrective action plan. I actually need to have that motion go forward for approval from the board. So on the reports section, letter A, which is financial reports, the three things noted there, motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Andrea. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Board of Education, Monroe County School Board Association, labor relations, I can just quickly say that's next week on the 17th, so that one is an upcoming luncheon next week. Do we have an update on information exchange?
I believe the meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. This, this meeting sort of falls funding with all, all the meetings of the month are going to take place. And legislative?
We met last week, and I can, I can definitely tell you that all of the districts in Monroe County are experiencing some of the pressures that Lou mentioned in his report regarding supply chains and staffing. There is a lot of uncertainty about how we move forward with foundation aid and, and what that landscape looks like as we come online with more funding for schools. But the, the big issue for this committee this year really still is the bus driver issue. We talked about that last year, about providing carve-outs for alternative licensing opportunities for bus drivers, because it really, the current requirements make it difficult to get the license in, in every single way. So in order to bring more people into that profession, the state needs to, to work on their end.
And that's the obtaining of a CDL or a commercial driver's license, which obviously is required. The Bozey's report was submitted by Mark Okanovich. It's going to be posted. I don't have it in front of me. Other board member reports, anything from some of the subcommittees any of you are participating on? As I said, this meeting sort of falls in between when they're next scheduled.
So we've had, I've been at the math curriculum review along with Larry. We're just, just really getting into the material and, and digging in and separating out into groups, writing up our surveys of what we want to, to get out of this, this review. And I had, we had the DEI meeting at Council Rock as well, so just starting that process.
I wanted to wait for a second. Did you talk about math curriculum?
Quickly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We also are, just like Andrea, Christine and I are sitting on the science curriculum review, which we had our first meeting, which is mapping out a survey led by Dr. Rio, to survey all our teachers, to see where we're at with science curriculum and areas that we can improve and expand. And it was the first meeting of several, and it was excellent.
Any other board member reports at this point?
I was just going to say the New York State School Board Association, the DEI committee, we had a retreat this past weekend. It's been almost a year since we started meeting monthly. So we just took a assessment of where we wanted to go in terms of, and what resources we wanted to provide for school board members across the state.
It's a, a, a committee that you're representing not just the Brighton community, but all of this district, so thank you for that. You feeling pretty good about progress so far?
Yeah, I think it's been a really great group and really interesting to learn about all the other areas in New York State and what they're doing.
Great. Okay, BTA.
Great, thanks for having me. I don't have a whole lot to report, just because it's been a short amount of time. At Council Rock, they're starting the habits of mind, so Andrea Yaman's been going into kindergarten rooms and using Eric Carl. She's starting with thinking independently, and they actually decided to make a snack for the caterpillar, the Very Hungry Caterpillar, and created a very interesting snack with vanilla ice cream and eggplant and strawberries, mixed it all together. And then each student was able to take a portion of the snack home and, along with the caterpillar, to be able to talk about how they could think independently and work together. She also wanted to add that there's an Eric Carl exhibit at the Strong right now and through January 2nd, and families can purchase tickets at the Strong, so that was really nice. Second graders at Council Rock participated in voting, and they also, we attached it to the Strong Museum of Play. They have a toy Hall of Fame, so we took the, we created ballots of all the nominated toys. The one that won from Council Rock was a pinata, but the official winners were Risk, Sand, and American Girl Dolls. And Mrs. Youngman's class actually learned about how to be accurate and honest because they were tallying the votes. We also had lots of lines, so they, they learned a true voting experience. And there's some awesome pictures of the kids behind the little voting booth curtain. It's really nice. At Front Road, students in the Fraz Rainbow Club, led by Lady Mazeroski and Ashley Ellis, met for the first time on October 18th. It's an elementary-level gender and sexuality alliance with a focus on showing love and support for LGBTQIA+ community. Forty-two students from grades three through five met after school at Fraz. They worked on community building, finding their why, and learned about International Pronouns Day on October 20th. They reported leaving feeling affirmed, respected, and excited for their next meeting. At Brighton High School, students in Mr. Morris's college economics class, they had a Syracuse University professor, professor emeritus, Dr. Jerry Avensky, who writes, wrote their textbook, has written their textbook. He flew in and visited with students. He conducted a seminar, and students asked about economics, current events, controversial issues, any future economic study, and he said it was a wonderful and engaging experience. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your question, PTSA.
Okay, like everyone else, I don't have a lot. Let's get it in focus. We are now accepting applications for the Nancy F. Beck Memorial Fund. The goal of the Nancy F. Beck Memorial Fund is to carry on Nancy's good work by awarding annual grants for long-term, child-oriented, hands-on programs and equipment that benefits the greatest number of children. Teachers, administrators, and parents may apply for these grants. Please visit our website for more details on how to apply. Come meet some of our new, I think I said bad here, some of our new families, Brighton families. I had a meet and greet yesterday at the high school, November 8th, at 6:30. Apparently it was well-attended. PTSA, thanks everyone for all of their purchases of Spiritware. We are in the process of distributing them all. Tell your kids to look for announcements at school. PTSA has been happy to return to hosting activities and events. Some things have been changed for safety reasons, but we welcome new ideas for activities and events. Reach out to your building chairs. Our next community meeting is on November 17th at 7:00 PM on Zoom. Please consider joining us to learn more about what is happening. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. McGowan.
A couple of quick items. First, thank you to those that responded and have had a lot of positive feedback about a note that went home last week, and we talked about it at the last board meeting, that I could just sum up by saying to people, please just be nice. People are working really, really hard to support your kids and families, and kind, thoughtful, supportive interactions. That doesn't mean that everybody has to agree or love everything all of the time, but being polite and respectful really gets people much further and is helpful to the staff that is doing everything they can to support kids. So we appreciate people's, both their patience, but their support, and above all, respect and kindness. Same things that we'd want for kids, we are hoping for from everybody. We're really excited that we will have a test to stay program. Monroe County Department of Public Health is developing the final details of that program, and essentially it boils down to unvaccinated exposures. So people that are unvaccinated, kids who would come to school having otherwise needing to quarantine would be able to test at school over a period of time and stay in school instead of having to quarantine. And we expect those details to come out again within the next week or two. And in all likelihood, it would start sometime right after Thanksgiving, so we're glad for that. We're also glad that children can now be vaccinated ages five through 11, and through both pharmacies, largely pediatricians, and some of the county clinics as well. And we continue to support that as an effort. It is not mandated for school. That would be up to the state to require. We don't see that happening any point in time, particularly because these are emergency youth authorizations at particular age levels. However, we're very excited that this opportunity is available to our kids and hope to see a lot of people take advantage of that to keep everybody healthy. Just a reminder on the, along the same lines, keep your masks up, please, to our students. I think Dr. Hall says it in his sleep, over the nose is the way it goes. And certainly, it's a well-known phrase because it has to be said often, so if we could please remind people to do that, it is super helpful as well. And we will be at 7 o'clock tonight, having our community forum. We will talk about the purchase of property that we mentioned at the last board meeting, very, very briefly at the beginning, because we'd like to give everybody the opportunity, of course, to offer any feedback through the community forum as they have in the past. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have the approval of the second reading, again, reviewed at the last as a first reading, of four different policies. I'll read each of the four policy titles and then put those forward as a motion for approval. All of these are basically changes in law and language and needed to be updated based on those changes in law and language. Policy 3420, non-instructional business operations, nondiscrimination, and anti-harassment in the district. Policy 5676, non-instructional business operations, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. Policy 7420, students' sports and athletic programs. Policy 6120, personnel equal employment opportunity. You've all had the chance to see these. Are there any questions? Okay. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Susan, seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Next up is the approval of a Capital Project Municipal Advisor Services Agreement. This is an agreement for our bond advisors to continue working on our behalf for the capital projects. We've been working with this, the same organization for a little bit. They've done outstanding by us, have been excellent partners. We'd like to continue to work with them. This is an approval to have that agreement completed. Questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Andrea.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Kevin, Dr. McGowan just referred to this, approval of a resolution to call a special district meeting for the purchase of acquiring real, real property, which is the land between the high school and the church. And this is not to approve the purchase, but to approve having a meeting to hold a vote to have the purchase, just to be clear. So this, we'll have the opportunity to, you know, hear feedback tonight as well at 7 o'clock, but this is a resolution to call a special district meeting in order to have a vote, just to get if I'm clear. Questions? Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda. We have both personality changes that you've had the chance to see, recommendations from the committee on special education, approval of recommendations from the committee on preschool, special ed. And I'm also going to make note of a, just an outstanding gift from Kate Ceruley and Chris Thomas in memory of their son, Owen Thomas. A gifting amount of $5,000 for the PTSA hardship grants. It's just an outstanding gift, greatly appreciated, and just a great way to honor Owen. I happen to know Owen and Chris and Kate, just outstanding people. Thank them for that gift. Motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Moved by Christina.
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Before I do the motion to adjourn, I will note that the meeting on the 14th, which, no, that's not.
30th.
30th, thank you very much. No, you're okay. Thank you. November 30th, we'll be at the high school.
No, November 30th is here, the 14th is at the high school.
Okay, I had it right to the center, right?
November, November 30th is here, and then December 14th we're at the high school.
That's okay. So I'll say that again. Next meeting, we'll be here on the 30th. December 14th will be hosted by Dr. Hall at the high school. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, moved by Andrea, seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.